This is the June 8th meeting of the zoning board of appeals. Notice to those in attendance, your image, telephone number, and name may be recorded for posterity. Okay, I'll open the hearing with the Berlin Memorial School sign. If I may call you Steve, Steve, are you available?
Yeah, let me promote him. Oh, and Lynn, remember that I did verify the newspaper publications and some of the butter notifications.
Okay. Unless there is an objection on the part of any of my fellow members of the ZBA. There was some question about notification. The notifications that we require usually show the date that the notices were filed to the residents. And a copy of the newspaper insert is usually included. We did get a bill, I believe, did we not, Leanne, for the newspaper?
No, I got, I got a notification saying that it was posted. It's not a bill. It was a statement confirming that they were posted.
Okay.
I folded two affidavits.
Yes.
To Leanne.
And then, as far as the notifications go, we received the majority of them back, or they received back and they had a date that was consistent with being in a timely fashion. I suggest that we waive our usual requirement for all of them to have a date that they were mailed. They don't have to be returned, but we need a date that they were mailed. And I think it's reasonable to assume. I would just caution the petitioner, it is something that someone could challenge in the future.
Well, I mean, it wasn't specified that those white and green pieces had to come back with dates and information on it. When I first went to the post office, when we weren't going to meet the deadline, all they did was give them back to me. Nothing was signed, nothing was stamped. So when we sent them out the second time, I didn't go through that process again. I just put return addresses on the ones that we didn't get back. And the envelopes that were returned with the envelope of the ZBA were all dated early 13th, and they were all stamped on the same day. So, I mean, if they're going to challenge us on a technicality.
I, I am suggesting, Steve, that we accept what you have submitted, if you're hearing me. Even though it is not what we usually require. Having said that, do you have a presentation for us?
No, I mean, I, I put all this together on behalf of the Berlin Memorial School and John Campbell, who requested the sign. I submitted all the documentation and 15 copies of what was requested by the ZBA. Assuming that that would be distributed. It wasn't communicated to me whether it would be or wouldn't be, but my assumption was that it was going to be distributed, the 15 copies.
Yeah, and you did have an opportunity to read the instructions for filing with the zoning board of appeals, did you not?
I did.
Okay. So, is the school the owner of the property?
The town of Berlin owns the property. The Berlin Boilston Regional School District leases the building from the town of Berlin.
Okay. So, on our suggestion, have you had an opportunity to meet with the selectmen?
No, I haven't. This was the first step in the process.
Well, yes, but it was suggested, and I think even from us and from the town administrator, that perhaps you would want to meet with the selectmen.
The email I got from the town administrator about a week ago recommended that we do not go forward with this proposal, and it would still require the approval of the selectmen. I was never instructed to sit down and meet with the selectmen prior to this meeting.
Okay. Well, I guess what I'm saying is, we would not be able to reach a favorable decision unless two things were met, and my colleagues can hop in at any time. First of all, when you're leasing property, the owner of the property needs to sign. Number two, there is some question, if I may finish.
Yes, sorry.
There is some question as to whether or not even the leased land is in fact, goes to the street. It doesn't appear to in maps that are available at the town. Do you have any other map that says to the contrary?
To what exactly will you referring to?
That even the leased portion of the land does not go out to South Street.
I have no lease in, in place. When this process started, when I spoke to Bob Conry, the business manager said that the school district in the town of Berlin were in a process of coming up with or finalizing a lease for the property.
Okay, so you do not have a proper lease on the property either?
The Berlin Boilston Regional School District, at that time, two months ago, did not have a lease, was my understanding, with Bob Conry, and he was finalizing with the town of Berlin.
Does Boilston have one?
It's, we're not talking about Boilston.
I understand that, but I just wondered why, you know, you might have with one and not the other.
That would be a discussion with the business manager.
Okay. So, again, any of my colleagues can pipe in, but as of right now, we have no evidence that you even have a legitimate lease on that property.
That was stated clearly in my application.
Okay. And that the land belongs to the town of Berlin under the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectmen. So, I would suggest to you that you might want to go see them before we close this hearing. Does anyone else have any other questions or comments on these facts on the board? How do you feel about what I'm saying, folks? I don't want to be the sole perpetrator of this.
I mean, Lynn, I'm just going through the process as I was asked to go through with the zoning board and the billing inspector.
Right.
And these were the first steps that I was told I needed to take, was to fill out the application and go before the zoning board.
There is a place on the application and in the instructions for the owner of the property to sign.
And the town administrator signed that document on behalf, Margaret signed that document on behalf of the town of Berlin.
May I interrupt just for a moment? Margaret is in attendance. Do we want to promote her?
Well, I, I think that that would be up to Margaret if she wants to chide in, but.
He has raised her hand.
Okay.
Leanne, would you like me to promote, or are you going to?
Yeah, could you please?
Sure. Okay, there we go.
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
Please forgive my, my evening look here. So, I have, I have, I do have a couple of, a couple of comments. First of all, Steve is correct. I did sign on behalf of Berlin for him to submit the application to the zoning board of appeals. He had, they had long missed the deadline to actually file an appeal on the building commissioner's decision, as you know. To the point of, of Boilston and their lease agreement, the last I communicated with the town administrator in Boilston, they did not yet have a lease agreement either. And I actually shared our draft with them. So, to my knowledge, they still only have a draft as well.
Well, just so we're clear, Margaret, I did not receive the billing inspector's letter until 35 days after it was dated. So.
Was, was it mailed to you or emailed to you?
It was mailed to a completely wrong address, something in Bolton, Mass. I reached out to him and asked him where it was, and I didn't receive it till about 10 days after, 30 days past August 16th.
Okay, well, I'm sorry for that.
Us dragging our feet, I got it 35 to 40 days after it was dated.
Okay.
That needs to be made perfectly clear.
Okay. Did you have any other comments, Margaret?
The only other comment I have is regarding a sketch that, or a drawing that was done at the time the school was constructed, which is what we plan to use for the lease agreement when that comes. And, and it is, based on what's been discussed, it is correct, based on those bounds on that drawing, that the leased land would not be to the road. It really is only a perimeter around the school building and certain grounds. My understanding is that the town clerk provided that drawing to the select board, the superintendent and the school principal at the time the school was built.
Thank you, Margaret. Please stay, please stay on board. Steve, if I may call you Steve.
Yes, I.
Do you think it would be wise, being that the land that you're looking to put the sign on is within the jurisdiction of the town of Berlin and not the school district, for you to have an opportunity to meet with the selectmen before we do any vote?
Well, again, my understanding was this was step one, that the zoning board either approves or doesn't approve the changes in the bylaws for an LED sign. So, if you're telling me that meeting with the selectmen is step one, then that's what I'll do.
Okay. Margaret, could you arrange that before our next meeting, or?
I could. I actually had a conversation today with John Campbell about that, and I'd be happy to arrange that.
Would you be willing to attend, Steve?
Well, yes, but do I have to go through the same process again, mailing out?
Let me explain to you what the option would be, as far as I'm concerned, as long as none of my colleagues disagree. And that would be, at your request, we could continue the hearing till, I think it's July 13th. Is that true, Leanne?
Yes, July 13th is the next meeting.
15th or 13th?
13th.
13th, okay. And at your request, we could continue the hearing until July 13th, which would give, afford you an opportunity to meet with the selectmen between now and then, and have their recommendation come to the board.
Well, that's fine, but I don't know where John Campbell is in this process. I mean, I've done all my due diligence to put all this together for him, because this is a sign that he wants to put up for the Berlin Memorial School.
Lynn, interrupt again.
He needs to be part of this process.
Okay, excuse me, Susanna.
Yes, there is a John C. with his hand raised in the attendees. That could be a John Campbell.
Okay, let's promote him and find out.
Okay.
15 minutes later.
I see a paw.
There you go. It is all right, John Campbell.
Hi, John.
Hi, Lynn. Thank you so much for, you think after the thousand Zoom meetings I've been to, I've learned to put my last name on these things. So I apologize for the confusion. Thanks, Steve, for, for kind of leading the way a little bit. Let me just kind of recap, just we're on the same page about how we got here. About two years ago, a big storm blew down the sign that had been in front of the school, I think since it was built. It was the old-fashioned kind with the letters that you had to slide in. It was one of my many jobs to update the sign every year. And when it blew down, as sad as we were to lose that little piece of history, we thought, boy, an electric sign that would be more flexible and we could put more on would be a nice upgrade for the school. And it's kind of, it's one of those things. That's kind of how I got started. Steve was very good about going out and soliciting some information and finding out what would be involved and how much it would cost. And we moved on from there. We weren't especially attentive to the process until kind of late in the game. So there were two things that happened. One is what we're here talking about, which is there are several bylaws that we need help with, because the sign doesn't meet any of those requirements. And the other one, which Margaret, you know, I were talking about earlier, we don't own the land. The old sign was on town property, but we want to place the new sign as on town property. So, Lynn, you're right, you're probably, it's silly for us to go through a lot of stuff. The selectmen are just going to say, nope, that's our grasp. And we can start there. And Steve, I'd be happy to go to meet with the selectmen around this. It's not a technical thing. It's, we know why we want it where we want it. It's basically proximity to power. So we can move forward in that way. I think I would be very grateful if we could continue this to July. I'm happy to make that time in my schedule as well to kind of meet with this committee again. Our goal was, and Margaret and I were talking about this, you know, we're so grateful to be such an important part of, you know, Berlin. It's a, the school is the center for so much, and there's so much traffic there every day. We thought a sign that was more flexible, that could communicate more, would be something the whole town could use. The library could post there, the town offices could post there, town media could be noted, those types of things. So our, our goal is to be a little more part of our community. And we'll work through the process, you know, and if we can work that, that's great. But as I was saying to Margaret, we value our relationship with the town more than any one piece of equipment. So we will, if you kind of can guide us through the steps a little bit, you know, don't let me mess up. Go to the select, and I, I think they'll be okay with it, but, you know, they're officials with their own ideas, and then we will come back to you, and we can have a conversation about concerns, some of which I understand, just having been around for, it's gone on 10 years now, the principal there. Light pollution is, I know a big one, and then we have some, some answers for some of those things.
And I, I think the decision of the selectmen as owner of the property would weigh very heavily with this board. So Steve, are you willing to request that we continue the hearing until July 13th? What time do we have available, Leanne? Do you know?
We have, right now, we have one hearing at 7 o'clock.
Okay, and that's probably going to go at least an hour, maybe? If that's the one down off of River Road?
Correct.
Okay. So, would 8 o'clock on the 13th work for both you, Steve and John?
Certainly works for me, yeah.
What day of the week is that?
It's a Wednesday. It's the second Wednesday of the month.
Yeah, it should.
Okay. Are you making that request, Steve? Because you're the petitioner.
Am I making the request to continue this until July 13th?
Correct.
Then yes. Do I have to do that writing, or is that part of the meeting minutes?
Well, you, sometime between now and the next couple of weeks, you'd need to go in and, and sign a paper extending the time, okay? Because it's at your request.
I can email that out to Steve on Monday.
Yeah, Leanne is in the office Monday from 8 to 1, and Wednesday from 8 to 1.
On behalf of Chair, if I may, before we go down this road, I don't want to have somebody chasing us for no good reason here. The, the question is, this is being proposed as a, a sign that's based on LEDs. The town bylaw does not permit a sign based on LEDs. Does this board have the authority to, to waiver the town bylaw?
My understanding is that, according to the building commissioner, and we can only go by his letter, that, that may be possible.
It may be possible.
Right. We can do variances to the bylaw for dimension, those sorts of things. We cannot do zoning changes. My understanding is the only thing we cannot do is if you're in a residential area, we can't give you a commercial change, but we can do dimensional and other changes to the bylaw in the form of variances. We need to go on what the building commissioner has given us, and that's what he's given us.
So, Jim, thank you so much for, for asking that question. So, my concern is now, I mean, everyone on the zoning board, I'm assuming, has seen all the paperwork, has seen the dimensions of the sign, understands, you know, it's built and its character, and the only thing that's lit on it are the letters on the sign. So are we going to go through this process with the selectmen and have them say, yeah, that's fine? But then the zoning board is going to say, no, we don't want to change that bylaw? So are we putting the cart in front of the horse, or the horse in front of the cart right now? I mean, I'm assuming where you've all seen what we're proposing, you're either in favor of it, or you're not in favor of it.
I don't think anyone comes into this meeting predisposed one way or the other. We are here to hear evidence. And I think the fact that it has come up that there is no lease on that property to the district, that there, the land, even if there is a lease, appears to belong to the town of Berlin, and that the sign would be placed on the town of Berlin land, I think that their input would be critical to us making a decision. I don't know that we could make a decision without their input. Because they are the, you know, you are the petitioner, but, well, if you want to go strictly by law, you have no standing, okay? Not leasing, nor owning the property. There really is no standing, okay? But you are our school. And what we're trying to do is to find a way to resolve the issue of your sign without the rudimentary elements. So, it would be my suggestion that going to the selectmen, because that sign can never go up without their approval, regardless of what we do, that you meet with them, because you would have an opportunity between now and July 13th. And then, I can only tell you, I can't, not how the board would vote, but I would say what comes from the Board of Selectmen would be weighted heavily.
I have another question.
Okay.
And this is kind of both for Margaret, Margaret and for John. I guess the, the question here is, what is the school? And the reason I ask this is because we're discussing installation of a sign. The town's bylaw says in it that for the purposes of this section, the term "sign" shall not include the following. And the first exception is signs erected or posted and maintained for public safety and welfare, or pursuant to any governmental function, law, bylaw, or other regulation. So is this, is this sign being erected to serve a governmental function?
I understand your questioning, and I understand that portion of the bylaw. The concern is the piece of land that the sign would go on is town property under the jurisdiction of the selectmen.
Yeah, okay. Why is that relevant to my question?
I don't understa, because the selectmen are not really requesting this sign. They're allowing, according to Margaret, it's allowing them to file, given the letter from, okay.
Understood. But it's, the question is, if it's a governmental function that this sign serves.
It may be that the selectmen determine that they have sole priority over it. Yes, you're right. I've read that.
And if, if that's the case, if the selectman determines that it's actually their sign, or that this sign serves a governmental function.
On their property.
Then this entire bylaw doesn't matter, and it all kind of goes away.
It is possible that the selectmen could say that we have determined that, you know, the sign is fine, we're going with the sign. They need to be three feet smaller, or whatever they need to be, and they may invoke that chapter. Okay, but we can't, and should that happen, they may turn around and say, cancel the hearing.
Lynn, I just want to bring to your attention, there's a Mary Reddington that has her hand raised in the audience.
Could someone promote her?
I can do that. Hey, Mary, you've been promoted. You have to turn your mic on.
Hi there. Sorry, I, I'm in a butter, and that's the reason I'm here, and I'm just, obviously, I wasn't one of the 15 people that got all the information from Steve. And I got the letter in the mail registered, and it basically just said that there was an appeal, and I had heard that it was a lit sign. So I'm wondering what my rights are as in a butter, or are they not important if it's owned by the town?
I think Margaret and I would both say, and the board members would all say, that the abut is rule. You're the ones that have to live with these things. So, you know, your input is important. It isn't conclusive, but it is important. And what I, what I would suggest is, if you leave your email address, I don't know, Margaret, do you have to post this? If you have a meeting?
The select board meeting does have to be posted. This wouldn't be posted as a hearing, so it just requires the 48 hours' notice.
I would suggest, Mary, that you call.
Mary Arada?
Yeah. At 2442, and ask her that when this is on the agenda, that she give you a call or send you an email or something, and let you know about it. And you can discuss it with your neighbors if you choose.
Okay, great. That's all I needed. Thank you.
And we sent out a list of 33 abutters for this issue. And there are probably only six on that list that would actually be able to see that sign from their house.
Okay. I think that, you know, both the selectmen and this board would take that into account. Does anybody have anything else that they'd like to ask or questions?
Well, where are they going to get the power for this thing, or is it battery operated?
There's two poles either side of this driveway that leads to the school, which are supported by NSTAR. So we would have to work with NSTAR to have them bring down a dedicated 120 line with a panel with a meter and two breakers, one for the sign and one for an outlet. Same thing we did in Boilston at the Hato. I mean, if anyone has any concerns about, you know, this sign, I mean, it's not lit up. It doesn't have any lights on it. It's just the LED signs. Drive by Tohoto, that sign has been up for two years, and it's going to be the exact same size sign, same shape.
Is it steady, or is it rolling? The one at Tohoto was steady, right?
Excuse me, Lynn. Instead of a green stag, it's got a blue, a blue Jay. And it's, depending on what is programmed, it's either a steady sign, or it, like you said, it rolls. And this sign is not going to face the street. It's double-sided. So it would actually face up and down South Street. So any illumination from this. So any illumination from this sign will not be projected directly on any of the residences across the street. And again, it's just the LED letters on the signs.
Does anyone have anything else from the board members? If not, and it's your wish, Steve, that we continue to the 13th at 8 o'clock. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Would someone care to make that motion?
Still moved.
Was that Jim?
Yep.
Is there a second, please?
I'll suck it in.
Okay, that's Denny Batlett. I'm just repeating names because we are on webinar. Okay, I'm gonna do a roll call vote. Pat? Susanna?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Denny?
Aye.
Jenny?
Aye.
And Keith?
Aye.
Okay, so I take it that we will see you next July 13th at 8 o'clock unless the situation is resolved at the Board of Selectmen's level. And thank you for coming on, John. Okay, I'll entertain a motion while we have the motion to move it. So the hearing is closed. Steve, John, you're welcome to stay and listen to the rest of our program. But otherwise, we'll see you on the 13th. Okay, I think we're past time for the next hearing.
Yes, it's now 7:33.
And this is 272 West Street?
Correct.
Okay, I'll open the hearing for 272 West Street. Is the petitioner available?
Yes, I'm promoting him now.
It's a continuation, right?
Yes. He should be coming up. Okay, Douglas is on.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
We can hear you. Hi there.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
I'm doing good, so.
Do you have any new information for us?
I did submit like a three new paperwork to the board. But I wa- last meeting was requ- I had a, you guys request like the engineer, like, you know, to have a letter and all that. And I did work with the engineer a little bit with the architect as well. But unfortunately, like when we had the meeting, he got COVID. So it's been two weeks that he is in recovery. So we could not like, you know, meet and, you know, kind of.
Finalize it.
Yes, so from what he says, like there was construction, it's like, you know, open field. You have like many possibilities, you know, but depends how much those possibilities will cost. So, and I mentioned to him, Chris, I just kind of like need some possibilities and price for the cost for those possibilities. So and then we, we have any schedule, we have, we have like, you know, a meeting schedule, but unfortunately we could not meet because of COVID situation. So three things that I have for tonight, which is, I wanna make, talk a little bit about the documents that I sent to you guys. That will be the first one. So I sent you guys like, you know, an image that I found on the town website, you know? That's like a G, I think it's GIS map. That's what I think it is. So, and I put it over that three inches on regular ruler, this one right here, like, you know, just a regular ruler. So anyone has that on your desk. And also on that plan, I did a scale because when the engineer was explaining to me, he said that was basically like all the information you ask me, it's already on the scale of the plan. So I don't know if I do have Mr. Hanks with us today? Do I?
I don't think he's in attendance right now.
Okay, it's all right. I just.
He said he had come later, I think, tonight, if he was able to come.
So basically, like everything that we had talked on the previous three meetings, everything that I mentioned to you guys, it's all proven on the scale of the plan, which was done by Brandon Consulting. So I just want to mention that the scale is like one inch on the plan. It's about 40 feet on the ground. So I just did like a little breakdown, which is like, you know, half an inch is about 20 feet on the ground. Quarter inch is about 10 feet on the ground. One eighth of an inch on the plan means about like five feet on the ground. So with those dimensions, anyone can see that everything that I said here, it's basically true. And you guys can calculate that with a simple ruler. So that's one thing.
In case we have any new people in the audience in your district, which is Commercial Village, I believe, you're required to keep a 30-foot side lot. And you're looking for what, 24 and a half?
Yes, I need actually like, I need four feet and six inches.
Okay.
Extra off the setback.
Yes, that lot setback. And we also heard from the building inspector before that if you were one house over, you would only have to have a 20-foot side lot.
Yeah.
If you were in a residential agricultural.
Or if was the old legislation as well.
And you also presented, I think, two letters from abutters or folks living near you, right?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Also, the second thing I was, wanted to mention was the scale of the plans. So you guys can check it out. The other thing, it's like I wanna mention to Ms. Roberts, it's like she requests about shifting the building. You can check on the plan that if I shifted the building, the other L of the addition will be also getting into the setback as well. Also, just to clarify that, Ms. Roberts, if I, to shift the building in a way that the building is completely out of the setback, I need to shift the building eight feet according to this plan. So, and that's basically possible. But I just, I mean, without, you know, without moving the surge line. Also, I wanna just let like Mr. Royer, like, to move the building back, to be complete, completely out of the setback, I need to move back about 15 feet according to the plans. And if I do move 12 feet and a half, I'm already inside of the buffer zone. So just those things that I wanna mention to you guys. And the third, I wanna request the board to have an extension of another 30 days. So hopefully I can meet with the engineer and the architect and bring you guys more info, if you guys need more information.
All right, well, let's go to the rest of the board. Does anyone have any questions of the petitioner? Do they still want to hear from the engineer? Are they satisfied with the responses and the plans that the petitioner has given us? I know you had some questions, Susanna, before. How do you feel? Do you feel your, if they've been resolved or?
I, I do. And having learned about the difference in realizing it was in the Commercial Village, I think the only question I would have was that there would, it would be used residential only and nothing that would fall under Commercial Village. I don't know if that needs.
We had already asked, we had already asked the petitioner because we knew that he was in construction or landscaping. And he gave us two addresses where he has his office and where he stores his equipment. Am I not correct?
Yes.
Yes, you are correct. So the place will not be used as a commercial or business operating or anything like that. It's just residential.
And you have no qualms about us putting that right? Not that we need to because it's a given, but you have no qualms about that being written into the decision? If the decision is in fact in your favor, correct?
I do not have any problems with that.
Anyone else? Jim, do you have anything? I know you had some questions.
Yeah, not at the moment.
How do you feel about what the petitioner has come back with?
I don't know, to be quite honest. He's saying it's 12 and a half feet. This is, it would be the distance from what he could go back before he hits the buffer. I mean, I don't know.
So are you saying you want to hear from an engineer?
Yeah, I think I'd like to hear what the engineer has to say.
Anybody else? Yes, Denny?
I, I know he spoke at one time that his trucks would not be parked in his yard. And I've been by there two or three, four times last week or so, and he's got trucks and trailer in there.
You care to address that?
Yes, it's because I still like doing work in my house. So I mean, I'm, I'm a landscape owner, right? So and then I was like doing my, some plantings, I got some blueberries installed. I can send you guys a picture of my daughter installing her first tree, which was a macun apple. So, and sometimes that the facility where I have my garage, they close the gates as, at like 9:00 PM. So it caused that we had like some situations this last week. And I drove home with the truck and the trailer, but my driveway is like really big. So of course, when I have the garage built and everything, won't fit my truck and trailer. But I mean, sometimes you might see my truck and trailer here because I'm doing work on my own land, so.
Have you seen them any other time, Denny?
Quite often on the weekends and during the first of the week, I've backed in there.
I mean.
I've never seen anything with any equipment on the trailer.
If you guys drive by today, you're gonna see my trailer here? Because I could not drop that off because I had the meeting, so I drove straight here. But I mean, that's, I mean, I can send you guys about seven years of alleged paperwork that proves that I do pay storage for seven years. And I'm at the facility for seven years, so I'm not planning to use as a.
Let's, let's, let's do two, let's do two things. First of all, would you give us the address of where the majority of your equipment is stored?
Yes, so that's 800 Bolton Road in Marlboro, Mass. The place called Smart Storage. You can call them. They will, I mean, present any paperwork you guys need to know.
Now, and, and where else? Where was your office?
My office is at 245 Boston Coast Road East, Marlboro, Mass, Unit 1. And you can go to the Massachusetts Corporation database and check that as well. It's been seven years that I get that on that address, since I started the business.
Thank you. Are you still uncomfortable, Denny?
Well, I think the bylaw is kind of so it's not parked overnight in these areas.
I'd just like to mention that I do can have like one truck and one trailer back in those residential, commercial areas. I cannot have more than one truck and one trailer. But I mean, I'm just mentioning that, but I'm not using as that. But of course.
Are you saying because you're in a Commercial Village district?
Yes. I can park one truck and one trailer here, like, you know, totally legal. But that's not my plan, as I'm saying to you guys, I'm just saying like if I need. But I mean, if you just, my truck's about like, you know, 16 feet, my trailer's another 20 feet. So if you calculate after I put the garage in, there is no, no way to park, like, you know, there is no even possibility to put a trailer here, you know what I mean? But of course, I'll be parked on the side of the street when I'm doing like work in my house because I do all my maintenance myself. And my guys, they come by, like, and they park on the street. I mean, there is a little street like I had on the right. That's where they park when they stop by to mow my lawn, so. But I, to be honest with you guys, I'm not intent to use the property as, I mean, to run my business or anything like that, you know? If I would, I mean, it also doesn't fit. I got like, I got three trucks, I got four trailers, and I got like, you know, a whole bunch of equipment. So I mean, it doesn't fit here, so.
Okay, I think we have one of two choices to make. Either we feel prepared to make a decision or we want more information from the engineer. So let me go around and ask each person on the board how they feel. Pat, do you think we need more information?
I'm fine. I'm fine, Lynn.
Okay, Pat's okay. What about Denny?
I'm pretty comfortable the way it is now.
So you're saying you don't need more information, is that correct?
I would really like to see the engineers drawing.
All right, well, that, that's different. So you want to see the engineer? So you're not an okay, you're an engineer, right?
Yes.
Okay. Keith?
I'm okay.
Okay, so Keith is okay the way it is. Jenny?
I'm an engineer.
Okay. And Susanna?
I'm okay.
And where's Jim? There's Jim, okay.
I'd like to hear the engineer.
Okay. All right, the reason I went around and did this, Douglas, is because you need defer variance, I believe you need four positive votes out of five. And I see that three of the folks that are present are not prepared without the engineering report.
Okay, to be honest with you, I would prefer, if you guys can give them another 30 days, so I can have everything in order and you guys have paperwork, you know, so you guys can file as well.
So are you requesting a 30-day extension?
I mean.
For till, till July 13th?
Yeah.
And that, we've already got a 7 o'clock and an 8 o'clock, do we not?
That is correct.
Let's go for 8:30. I don't want to put it out too much further. I have a feeling one of them may not happen. So July 13th at 8:30 PM is the request of the petitioner? Would someone care to make that motion?
Still moved.
Okay, Jim, Jim moved it. And Jenny seconded it. Okay, I'll go around for a roll call vote. Pat?
Yes.
Denny? Jim?
Aye.
Susanna?
Aye.
Jenny?
Aye.
Okay, so we'll see you again at 8:30 on July 13th and we thank you for your patience.
My pleasure and thank you, guys. See you.
Bye.
See you next month.
Okay, so our last endeavor this evening is not until 8 o'clock, right?
It's not till 8:30.
Oh, great. We, we have.
Well, because we thought 10 Bigelow was gonna be continued until tonight, but then they requested till July.
July.
But we had already voted for the next one to be scheduled at 8:30, anticipating Bigelow would be before it. So we can do administrative stuff while we're.
Right. How about the minutes?
There was two sets. Remember, we met twice last month. So there's May 11th and May 12th. And I sent out my late, my latest and greatest on Monday. So that was the most up-to-date.
Okay, unless there's objection, I'll call for a motion to do them together. Does anyone want to make a motion for May 11th and 12th?
I would make a motion that we approve. I would make a motion that we approve both sets of meeting minutes as presented in the Monday distribution.
And Jenny seconded it. Okay, I'll do a roll call vote. Pat?
Yeah.
Jenny? Jenny?
Hi.
Jim?
Hi.
Susanna?
Hi.
Okay, so we're a hundred percent on that. Danny, do you have something to bring to the board?
Nothing. I did the.
Yeah, you processed something for us, right?
Yeah, money returned for the people that wanted the construction yard at the mall.
Okay. I haven't heard anything. There's no one from the, oh. Jay is on there. Could we ask Jay if?
Jay has left, but Carolyn McDonald is on planning board and she's still on.
Yeah, okay, could you, unless she objects, could you promote her?
Raise your hand, Carolyn, if that's okay.
She raised her hand.
All right, Carolyn's on her way up.
Thank you.
Hey, guys.
Hi.
Hi.
So you want a progress report about the construction yard?
Please.
They, they are. We've had an informal meeting with them, and we have a hearing scheduled for the twenty eighth of this month. So that's, that's about it. They seem pretty determined to still move forward, so.
Okay, then, well, good luck.
Yeah. Thanks.
And thank you for reporting to us. So on the twenty eighth, they're on the agenda for a hearing.
Yes.
Do we have any, any other business? I know I'm negligent. I haven't done my ethics, which was due in May. I've got to do that. Danny, you would do too. Have you done yours?
I did mine.
Oh, you're a good guy.
I need a copy of your certificate, Danny, for the rec files.
Oh. All right.
Yeah, you should send one to the town clerk, too.
I did that already.
Okay, well, then maybe you could ask her to, or you could just forward the same note.
I hand delivered it.
Oh, okay.
All right, I, I'll.
Okay, thank you, Leanne. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to share? Or would you like to take a break for fifteen minutes?
It's a half an hour, we have to take a break.
I, I realize, yeah.
Yeah, I can stop, I can pause the recording until eight thirty.
Okay, I'll entertain the motion that we pause the meetings until eight thirty when our next petitioner is Joe. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay, that's Jenny.
Yep.
Is there a second?
Second.
That's.
Pat.
Yeah. I'll go around for a roll call. Pat?
Yes.
Danny?
Hi.
Jim?
Hi.
Susanna?
Hi.
Jenny?
Hi.
And Keith?
Hi.
Who's very pensive.
All right, I'm pausing the recording.
Okay, see you in half an hour.
And I will promote the petitioner. And it is now eight thirty. We're waiting for Jenny to come back. And select board member Chris Keith is back in the, in attendance, Lynn.
Thank you.
F Y I. Jenny's really enjoying her little break. She's not coming back.
Ran away.
That's okay, I bet Pat is texting her.
Was it what you want me to?
Well, I just sent her a text. Let's hope she took her phone with her. Nope, there's her phone.
And there's Jenny.
Hello.
That was me, Jenny.
Oh, hi.
I think we're all here, so we'll resume our meeting. And I'll open the hearing for thirty-two, thirty-four Autumn Ridge. I see the petitioner is here. Mr. Ryan, do you wish to speak to us?
Yes, I guess Richard, I don't think is at the meeting tonight. We did go over all the measurements. We did come to, I believe I tried to send in the sketch and everything of a possibility of two hundred and fifty-two square feet, I think it was, of additional living space for a little rec room area in the basement near the walkout doors.
And that will keep you within the thirty-five percent. I think he sent that to us, did he not, Leanne?
He did, yes, he sent a letter with, with that information.
That you could finish off two hundred and fifty-two feet in the basement and still be within the thirty-five percent square feet. And I even asked him, in other words, we're still under the old, you know, eliminate hallways, eliminate doorways, that sort of stuff. There will be a new bylaw, and asked him, and he said either way he did it, it came out very close to the same, right, Leanne, because you were there.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So, Mr. Ryan, who lives in that in-law apartment?
That would be my sister-in-law, who's my secondary caregiver and her two children.
All three of whom would be related to you?
Yes.
Because I don't think it says by blood. I think it just says related, does it not, in the bylaw, folks?
Well, it's by my wife's blood. Yeah, she's my primary caregiver, which lives in, in the home with me at the thirty-four address.
Okay. Anyone have any questions of Mr. Ryan?
Just curious. The age of the children of your sister-in-law?
I believe age nine, give or take a birthday, I'm pretty sure nine, and age two.
And the nine-year-old goes to the Berlin School System?
No, goes to private school. Both, both actually go to private schools.
Oh, okay.
And you understand that occupancy of the in-law apartment is limited to no more than three people?
Yes.
And that includes little people, right?
Yes.
And we've seen the outside appearance of the premises is that of a single-family residence. I'm just looking for anything else that is required in the bylaw. I think that pretty well covers it. It's the thirty-five percent. And it has to be someone blood-related to you that lives there. Does anybody have any other questions that they'd like to ask?
I just have a comment. I read Richard Hanks's letter. And his last sentence, it's therefore there's no requirement for variance.
Correct, he just needs a permit for the in-law apartment.
Right. I think it's kind of out of our hands now.
Well, we have to do the permit.
We have to do the in-law permit, because that when they actually passed the bylaw, they gave everyone who had an in-law apartment five years to comply. And so even though the in-law apartment did not require a special permit at the time that the house was constructed, within five years, a permit was required, and it's been five years.
Okay.
Lynn, just to make you aware, the building commissioner, Richard, is now in attendance, if you need him.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions of our building commissioner?
I have one question for Mr. Ryan. Can we just confirm the number of bedrooms, please?
The number of bedrooms in the in-law suite is three.
Thank you.
And I'm sure that, you know, anything that we do is subject to border health regulation, et cetera, et cetera, and you're comfortable with that, correct, Mr. Ryan?
Yes. I was under the impression from Mr. Hanks that the reason I had to go in front of this board first off was is my special permit was going to run out because it was given the first time, the next time you had to actually apply. And then therefore, since I'm going to continue to use it as an in-law suite, I had to actually get the special permit in place.
And that is correct as far as we're concerned, too. So you only applied for a special permit, right?
Correct. In, in the case of our measurements from what we had listed as far as assessors was it looked like we would be out of compliance, but when we actually measure within the guidelines of the special permit, we came up with the correct information then. So at first, we were under the impression that we may not even be able to do any kind of additional finishing of square footage. So to make sure, we, we came in front of this board to get the permit, and also in case it wasn't in the thing, see if I could get special approval, but we came to the other conclusion.
Well, on behalf of our board, I'd like to thank our building commissioner for going the extra mile, because I'm sure this consumes some time of his. And we appreciate his efforts to investigate on our behalf. Does anybody have any questions?
We have someone in the audience with their hand up.
Two people, actually, and I believe they are both residents of the same address.
Okay, we had, I'm assuming because I see a hand for Mr. Skiles. Could you promote another person who has the hand raised? And in the meantime, Mr. Skiles, if you unmute, we'd be glad to hear from you.
Where'd they go?
I promoted them.
You did?
I moved them up, yeah.
Where'd they go?
They should be joining, they should be coming on.
Okay.
Mr. Skiles, if you'd like to unmute, you could speak with us or tell us whatever it is you'd like to say.
Yes, so the, there's some simple questions. I thought that the square foot, the percentage was actually thirty-three percent. Am I incorrect on that?
The bylaw says thirty-five.
It does. I thought I had it as thirty-three. Then the other question is, who actually made, did these measurements? I, what I'm referring to, I would like an unbiased measurement.
It was our building commissioner.
Oh, it was your building commissioner, okay. And the next question is, which I brought up at the previous meeting, is the square footage, I would think, was, unless there was renovations done on both units, the square footage should actually be in the deed. I'm not looking, asking to look at the deed, that's not my business, but in the deed, it should have the floor plans of both units and the square footage. We are next door to Mr. Ryan. We're at thirty Autumn Ridge. The other person on the video on the Zoom conference is Nina Canelo, that's actually my wife. So we're next door to the property. And as the house is being built, we've actually gone through almost every house in this community, as it was being built by Mark Rhodes and Chuck Black. Plus, Mark Rhodes, actually, he's the one that actually built the thirty-two and thirty-four, and my wife have gone through. He should actually have the square footage of the originally built property. And the other question is, has the board, there was some confusion, as I recall. Mr. Ryan had asked for permission to originally do some construction or renovation on thirty-four Autumn Ridge, which is the main house, which is incorrect, and I think Lynn Ryan may have sent a note. So I want to make sure that the board hasn't approved anything already by, by mistake, because it's thirty, thirty-two, not thirty-four. So the document I have here is Mr. Ryan, number thirty-four. And the other question is, again, I have how many people are living in the unit? And that's pretty much it. And I'll just say that the, that the unit, the guest house in-law suite is only about ten, fifteen feet from our property line. Okay, so, uh, you know, I'm concerned about the, the traffic and the parking, et cetera. Uh, first, I, I've sent the board two, two, uh, various letters because I was initially under, under, in the understanding that this was a, uh, for elderly in-law. Now, all of a sudden, at this meeting, it has changed for sister-in-law and two children. Uh, so I want to be, uh, make sure about that. And, uh, and, uh, I've had one other question, uh, one other concern. Uh, so it, you know, if that's true, then I'm not, uh, some of the, what I wrote in the letter about why does an elderly need a gym in the basement? Why do they need a wine cellar in the basement? This and that, uh, that may be irrelevant if, uh, it's now all of a sudden changed. And also, some of my concern from the previous meeting, uh, Mr. Ryan kept saying, "It's huge, it's huge, it's huge." Those are his words. And then one of the board members asked him, uh, I forget who asked, said, "So you want to make it larger?" And there was no answer. The, the impression from the original, the previous meeting was the intendency is to perhaps make this a single home dwelling, which it goes against the bylaws. And therefore, the, the, the board actually said, "If you want to do that, take out the kitchen."
Well, uh, I believe that Mr. Ryan asked what his solution would be. And I think we told him, "You either have to meet the thirty-five percent in-law requirement, or you have to remove the kitchen and make it one dwelling unit." That would be the only solution because we do not allow multiple family dwellings. But I see that Rich Hanks is here, and being that he did the investigation, um, as to what the square footage is and what's, was going to be allowed. Um, if he wouldn't mind, would you care to speak to that, Mr. Hanks?
Yes, absolutely. Can you hear me okay?
You're kind of, um, soft, but.
How about now? Let me get a little closer.
A little better.
A little better, okay, I'll try and get rid of close. So yes, uh, to, to Mr. Um, Skiles', uh, concerns and questions, yes, the last meeting, uh, Mr. Ryan did say that, you know, that, that the house is huge, your apartment is huge, but it comes down to the fact of what, what did it actually measure out to? So he was relying on the information of what the assessor's card had, which pretty much just, they, they, they measured the exterior of the house and they just multiplied by a number of floors. They didn't minus off the garage space and stuff like that. So when, uh, Mr. Ryan and I mentioned it out, we, we calculated out and, and he, he's under the, the threshold of the thirty-five percent. Um, a- as far as it being within ten feet of your property line, I, I don't believe that's the case. It, it's conforming and met the setback requirement to a side yard setback when the house was built. So nothing's been added onto the house, so, so it's not any closer to your house than it was in the past. Um, I don't know, what was it, any other, any questions, uh, other questions on that?
Mr. Skiles, did you have anything else you'd like to ask of the building commissioner?
Uh, I know. Uh, the issue was, yes, I realized that the, uh, the, uh, the, the in-law suite was built ten, twenty year, ten, twelve years ago or so. Uh, so I, I'm not talking about concerning any, how close it is to the property. There's nothing that can be done there. I'm just, uh, my point was that, uh, with more people leave, living there, it leads to less, uh, less privacy, uh, uh, more traffic. You're gonna have more traffic. There's always seems to be trucks and cars coming and going from the, uh, thirty-four, thirty-two and thirty-four. And, uh, and, uh, you know, there are, uh, some of my neighbors do have children and this and that. So no, I, 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 there's nothing that can be done with the ten, fifteen feet, uh, uh, between the property lines. And that, that was one of my issues, mainly, mainly privacy and, uh, basically safety.
Yeah, w- when, when, when I, when I was there the other day, I, I did notice you'd have a, a quite, a quite, quite the role of our bodies that are growing there. Um, you guys both seem to be well shielded be- between the, between your two property lines.
Well, yes, I, I, I don't want to, I didn't want to bring that up, but, uh, 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 yes, we built those, but we put those trees up long ago.
Mm-hmm.
They took, uh, twelve, fifteen years to grow twenty, thirty feet. Uh, when Mr. Ryan first moved in, uh, we had heard through the grapevine that they, that he thought they were ugly and wanted to cut them down. Until I went over and knocked on his door, nobody answered. I then, uh, knocked on the, uh, in-law suite and the elderly woman answered with a pit bull. Okay, and I says, "Those are, are trees," and that we had the property surveyed before, uh, you know, before we moved in. Every time we buy a house, we survey it, uh, have the, uh, land survey the property and put in the surveyor stakes. So that was that. And then, uh, a couple of weeks later, I saw Mr. Ryan had, uh, hired a surveyor, which is great, and I actually talked to his surveyor and, uh, his, his surveyor knew my surveyor and he saw our surveyor stakes. So those trees were put there as a, uh, for a reason, for the pri- privacy issue so that we would not see thirty-two and thirty-four because they were close to our house. Uh, this has, uh, not to deal with Mr. Ryan, but the previous owner, those were built, those trees, trees were planted, uh, when the previous owner lived there.
Yeah, so, 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 so the trees are still there and then I, I don't think there's any intention of moving or doing anything to them. And as you stated, they are your trees, so I think Mr. Ryan is well aware of that. And so, so I don't see the, the, the connection between, um, the apartment make, meeting the requirement of the bylaw and, 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 uh, and the privacy tree.
I have a question.
Uh, this is my wife.
This is Nina Gennella. I have a question. Will the measurements that you made and with the, with the, uh, of the two dwellings be made publicly available?
It's, it's in my file in the office, so if you want to see, I'd be more than willing to share it with you.
I, I would like to see it. I would like a copy.
I, I, I agree with my wife there. Uh, that's a good point, Nina, that I would like to see the measurements. And I can, therefore, then have the force to confirm, to confirm the measurements with the original dwelling. I know Mark Rhodes, I know Mark Rhodes very carefully, very well.
Mr. Skiles, um, you have the address of the ZBA. Um, it's very similar for the building inspector, but I'm sure Leanne could send you a copy of the letter that we have for this hearing that gives the measurements. Could you not, Leanne?
Yes, I could.
I, I don't just want a copy of what the measurements are. I want to see the drawing and the measurements and how the measurements are made. That's what I want to see.
Well, we don't have that.
Like, like the, like the s- squares of the rooms and the measurements and how, how all of that is calculated. So that we have.
Well, so, so, so.
We have an understanding of what's, what, what the laws are and what is allowed and what is not allowed.
Well, that, that was my purpose of going over and spending an hour and a half. It was to measure everything and to come up with a percentage of where Mr. Ryan is at, what is, what is apartment and the.
I'm sorry, that's part of the job. You have.
Yeah, I'm, 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 I'm not saying I'm complaining that I did it. I'm just letting you know that I did it. And, and, and.
I want to know what the law, what, what it is. We were told a lot of things that turned out to change. I would like to know and see in writing and have a written record of it. That's all I'm asking for. Not asking for anything other than that.
I don't mean to interrupt here, but there is.
I mean, we're.
Everything is public record because the house was for sale.
I would like a copy.
You'll be able to see all measurements.
And keep it in my files.
All right.
My wife and I are both scientists, PhDs, and we like things precise, not generalities. Precise sciences, but precise, preciseness in terms of biological activities, et cetera, and mathematics. Okay, and that's what we're asking for. We don't want any generalities. We want specifics, measurements, and.
Ms. Gennella? What?
Dr. Gennella, please.
I'm sorry?
I would like, I would like the drawings with the specific measurements available. That's all I'm asking for. I'm not disputing anything. You can vote and say that everything is fine. I just want to see it all in writing. That's all. All in writing with the measurements.
So.
That's, that's simply what I'm asking for. Nothing more, nothing less.
Yes, so basically, so we can, uh, verify it again, uh, uh, doing anything, whether it's law, science, or whatever, or this. Um, what's the problem of veri- uh, uh, verification of the numbers?
I, I think it would be fairly easy for Mr. Hanks to give you square footage per housing level. In other words, what square footage would be in the basement? What square footage would be on the first floor? Is that correct, Mr. Hanks?
That is, yes.
Would that be acceptable to you, um, Ms., uh, Gennella?
I would like to see the drawings with the square footage. I deal with lots of, of, um, building assessments in the work that I do and citing the instruments, et cetera, and we have drawings. We have blueprints. We have drawings showing how much square feet, what the length and the width of each room are. That's all I'm asking for. I don't have a layout of the house. Those things are available on the internet. Uh, you, you can see them. Um, you, you've, you've made measurements. All I want to do is have a copy. All I'm asking for is a copy of what those measurements are.
I think.
I'm not in there taking measurements. I'm not measuring that. You went and did that. You said you, you have. I, I would just like to see what, what that is. I want it in writing.
Well, may I, may I suggest to you that your house and, um, thirty-two, thirty-four were built as part of a subdivision? And there were plans, um, developed and approved by the planning board. Might I suggest to you that, um, you get those plans from the planning board and ask Mr. Hanks to tell you what the square footage he came up with on each level?
Well, I would think that would be your responsibility.
I don't understand, uh, uh, why this is an issue really. Uh, how difficult. When you buy a house, you get the plans. You get the square footage. And this should be in the deed. How easy is it to get the deed of what the, the drawing of the floor, of the, the floor plan of the first and or second floor of thirty-two and thirty-four? Why is this an issue? That's what we have when we bought this house. And, or, uh, we go to Mark Rhodes, who built the house, both the thirty-two and thirty-four, and ask him.
Well, let it, let me just express what our responsibility is as a board. Our responsibility is to see that the petitioner has met the criteria for an in-law apartment. And in that process, we rely on the expertise of the building commissioner. So the building commissioner has supplied us with, um, a document that tells us that so long as, I think it's two hundred and fifty-two feet of the basement would be the only thing that could be, um, uh, built. Is that correct, Mr. Hanks?
It is, yes. So the, the calculations that I came up with is that right now he's at twenty-nine percent ratio and that a lot would allow him to do an initial two hundred and fifty-two feet in the basement. Should he still plan on doing that? So now getting back to the plans that there, it's, it's not a secret. Um, and plan, you have, your house plans are not recorded on your deed. You can look up your own deed. You can go on the Mass Land Records and look up anybody's deed if you like. That, uh, uh, the deed is going to give you a meets and bounds describing your, your property, not your house plan. If you like a copy of his plan, I would gladly ta- send you what the original building permit plan is on the file. And while or not the house is built at exact plan, I do not know. And I did not go room to room. We measured general area to come up. You know, I didn't go each room and say, "This room's twelve by twelve." We took chunks and measured it. And I think I was pretty accurate as to what my total number came up to. So again, it's, it's not secretive and I would gladly share with you. And I would gladly let you look at the file and I'll gladly take a picture and send you the blueprints of the original house. So that there's, there's no secret to this at all, and I'm more than glad to share with you.
Yes, I, I just have one, uh, again, I, I may have missed it a little bit. So, uh, Mr. Hanks, uh, you're the building commissioner for what town or?
For the town of Berlin.
You're the, so, so you're independent. You're not working with the, uh, Mr. Ryan at all?
Oh, God, no. I, I, I am, I am duly appointed by the town of Berlin, by the Board of Selectmen. I am the building commissioner's zoning enforcement officer for the town. I represent the town, not any in- s- specific individual.
Okay, that's good. I'm, I'm okay with it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Does anyone on the board have any questions of Mr. Hanks or Mr. Ryan? You realize, Mr. Ryan, should the board choose to approve the in-law apartment, um, that it will be, you know, stipulated that it has to be the thirty-five percent, that you can't have more than three people living there, um, all, at least one of whom must be related to you, or in this case, to your wife, because I'm assuming the house is in both of your names?
Yes.
Um, and that they have to meet all other town regulations as far as, um, border health, conservation, um, and the list of multitudes. Um, and it will be restricted for five years. Mr. Ryan will have to come back in five years and renew his permit. And at that time, um, we will go through the same scrutiny as to who was living there at that time. Does anyone else have any other questions?
I have one.
Okay.
Um, forgive me if it's already been discussed, uh, but the in-law apartment is a three-bedroom. How many bedrooms are in the main residence?
Four bedrooms.
Four, okay. Do you, uh, share a well and a septic system?
Those are the only things being shared, yes. Everything else is independent.
So the system apparently is, the septic is capable of a seven-bedroom?
Yes, and that is actually on the deed. Seven-bedroom deed restriction is filed with the Worcester County Registry of Deeds.
Okay. And I assume the well is in good shape?
Yes, been inspected, high-quality water.
Jenny, Jenny, that deed restriction for the seven-bedroom septic system was put in place in September of twenty-twenty.
Hi, the board.
Uh, I, let me look.
Yes, I believe Bill Brookings from the Shoville Board of Health requested that be put on the deed.
Yeah, I'm looking to see who signed it. Uh, do, do, do. It is signed by Patrick Ryan and Holly Ryan. Um, it would be a matter of checking with Board of Health, I assume, to make sure it went through their approval.
I can, I can attest to that, that it did, because I, I, I remember when, uh, Bill Brookings asked Mr., um, Ryan to put that on there.
Okay.
Okay, if no one has any further questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I, I, I just have a, a one, just, uh, last comment again. Yes, uh, and I, I, we kind of expressed it already. I, I would, I want to make, I want to have some type of insurance that this is not going to eventually become a single home dwelling. And that's our major concern, myself and my wife. Because, uh, again, Mr. Ryan at the previous meeting kept going on how he wouldn't have bought the property if he knew. he wouldn't have bought the property if he knew he wasn't buying two houses, two properties, and they could do what he wanted. So that's our major concern, that, uh, somehow five years from now, six years from now, that property will be subdivided into, uh, a single home of property. And that's, that's our major concern.
Mr. Hanks may address this, but under our current bylaw, no multiple-family dwellings are allowed in your district.
That, that is correct. No, nor, nor could he subdivide that and break that off as a separate lot with a someone as a separate dwelling. You, you only allow one principal dwelling unit per lot, but you are allowed the in-law apartment, which is what he's applying for today.
And you made a very good point. The current bylaw, things can change.
Well, that would have to go to town meeting, and that'd have to be majority of, of, of the attendees at town meeting to change the bylaw.
But it can change.
Well, yeah, it could change. It could, it could get more stringent too. It could go either way.
Mm-hmm.
Is there anything?
Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, approve the permit for a in-law apartment with the standard uh, stipulations for thirty-five percent and three people, maximum occupancy, uh, for a period of five years, uh, be approved.
Okay.
Who did the seconding?
Dennis.
Is there any other, um, input before we, uh, do our roll call vote? Pat?
Yeah.
Uh, Danny?
Hi.
Jenny?
Hi.
Jim?
Hi.
Susanna?
Hi.
And myself, I'm an I. You will receive, um, Mr. Ryan and your abuddies will receive shortly. I'm old and I'm slow. It'll probably take a couple of weeks. Plus, we need signatures from folks, um, to have, um, the decision written and prepared. And then the town clerk will mail a copy to all of the abuddies that are listed on the petition.
Okay. Thank you.
We'll see you in five years.
All right, will do.
Okay, um, I think we're all set here, so we could close this hearing, could we? Was someone here to move to close the hearing?
Some moved.
Second.
So that's Jenny and Jim.
Yes.
Um, any further discussion or questions? Absolutely not. Uh, Susanna?
Yes.
Danny?
Hi.
Pat?
Yes.
Jenny?
Hi.
Jim? And I almost was going to have Mr. Hanks vote because he's becoming a regular. I, I want to thank you for your participation this evening. It was most helpful.
You're welcome. I apologize for not tuning in sooner. I, I kind of spaced out and forgot about it, and I, my phone ding was, it wasn't from anybody from you guys, but, but now it's like, oh my God, there's a ZBA meeting tonight. So I probably missed all the good stuff, right?
There's a meeting here tonight. Yes.
Yeah, and Rich, I, I just want to say thank you for explaining the registry of deeds better than I ever could.
You're welcome.
Okay, I'll call. We've done all of our, uh, other business that we lean.
We have.
I'll make a motion to close the meeting.
Before we do that, I do have one other thing that, uh, it's, it's more of a question for us to ponder over for future.
Okay.
Um, this thirty-five percent issue. Um, we have approved numerous in-law apartments over the last couple of years uh, since that was added to the town bylaw. Um, now we've changed or in the process of changing how that thirty-five percent is calculated. So what happens when we have someone in the future who comes back for a reapproval on one that we've previously approved? And we find out that it no longer meets the thirty-five percent requirement?
Well, you have a very interesting question there. Uh, would, 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 would they be grandfathered protected? Because that was, they, they were in existence prior to this change?
Well, the, the current way, well, what was approved at, at town meeting didn't provide any means of grandfather. So my concern is that maybe we need to have that added to the bylaw. Some way of, of saying that the, the ones that were approved in that period, um, you know, the last four years or whatever, um, up until this change uh, becomes effective, if, when they come up for renewal, would automatically be grandfathered as a thirty-five percent portion.
Right. Yeah, I think that's, that's a very, very good valid point that maybe we need to get that back to, uh, Tim Wheel on the planning board to, to take a look at that for, uh, an upcoming town meeting, because you're right. Um, I'm, I'm just thinking some of the ones, when the last couple of years, they were, you know, I know they, um, a couple of new houses like on Pollard, one of the new houses on Pollard that they didn't in-law, they actually had to finish a little bit of basement space just to make the ratio come out correctly. And under the new way of looking at it, it might not calc out the same, just, just as you just mentioned, that, um, the way you figure it is, is a different, a different means of getting there. So, yeah, ma- maybe, uh, you know, prior to twenty-twenty-two, you could use the old formula. I don't, I don't know what, what language it should be, but that's, that's very valid.
That, or they'd need to put something in the bylaw that says if an existing, um, uh, in-law apartment exceeds the thirty-five percent because of the change in the method of calculation, that it would be considered pre-existing non-conforming.
Right. Yep.
Yeah.
Which is probably the best route to go.
Right.
Because when you renew it right now, as Jim says, it has to meet the thirty-five in order to be approved. But we want, might want to make it that if for some reason, and only due to the change in calculation, that it didn't meet the thirty-five.
Yeah.
I think you're going to find the chances are they're going to, because I think you're going to find in the house, there were more hallways and bathrooms and things that were excluded in the past that now will be included in the overall size of the house. Do you know what I mean? Uh, Rich?
Yeah.
Um, stairways and all that. You didn't, you don't necessarily have those or as many of those in an in-law apartment.
Yeah, that's, that, that's correct, because typically the, the, the main house, the master, massive bedroom is going to be, have a larger closet that gets excluded. It's going to have a larger bathroom that gets excluded. A lot of times, hallways, correct, and usually the apartments there, as efficient as possible, they don't have those things. They could, might have started the equation.
But it, it's something that maybe, um, Susanna and I can take to the planning board and just ask them what they think is going to happen. Right, Susanna?
Well, yeah, and you're also bringing up the question of every five years, do we have to recalculate to make sure it is still within the thirty-five percent? Because, uh, I mean, chances are the thirty-five percent will actually drop, because most people add on to their house and not their in-law. But is it something where if we're going to have to keep reapproving an in-law apartment, do we have to keep recalculating to make sure it's under thirty-five percent?
Uh, I, I would hope the better question would be, has, has any, anything changed in the size? And if they say no, then keep moving. You know, and saying if, 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 if it met the requirement at the time, and they haven't made any modifications of the housing department, then I, I don't want to go measure everybody's house every five years.
No, I know. That's why I'm asking. And it would be, obviously, it would be on our system at that point.
Right.
The assessors, uh, measured our house. Is that something they do when there's a re-evaluation? Or can the assessors be involved in measuring? This is exterior, of course.
Right. They, they'll, they'll go around and they'll measure the exterior, and that, and that's where Mr. Ryan's numbers came quite skewed, is that, um, he has a very complicated house, a beautiful house and everything, but I, I think ease of measuring, they, they just kind of walked around, measured, and they just multiply times the number of floors, but they didn't back out garages and stuff like that, because they have a drive on the garages, so I think for simplicity, and just to get someone on the card, they, you know, you know, Mr. Ryan was correct when he was saying that, you know, by the assessor's card, the apartment was huge, but I, I questioned it, because the time I went over there, I'm like, there's no way that house, um, an apartment are close to the same size. The house is a lot larger than the apartment was, and, 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 um, you know, and the math proved that, that, that it wasn't. It was, it was just the way, you know. And it was, it was kind of interesting, because we look at the assessors card, and we, we're, we're looking at what the assessor had for numbers on there. And then we started to measure some of the rooms, like, well, they're rough. They, they, they gave it a couple of feet too many on this one, and a couple of feet too many on that one, and so, so it, again, his numbers dropped drastically from what the assessor shows it as for square footage.
Okay, so that wouldn't be helpful. Is there a garage at thirty-two?
Yeah, to drive on the garage.
Okay.
Is there also one at thirty-four?
Yeah, three-bay garage. So thirty-two has a two-bay garage, and thirty-four has a three-bay garage.
Wow.
Hmm.
But it's just something for Tim Wheeler and company to kick around. They need to figure that out, how they want to do that.
Yeah.
I think we should just give them a heads up that that could be something in the future. And I don't see any reason why it wouldn't make sense to put in the bylaw that if there's been no change in the size of the house or the apartment, but by measurement only, using the old method and the new method, it now comes up over thirty-five, that it would be pre-existing non-conforming, in other words, grandfathered.
Right. Yeah.
You know, I have to say one thing that surprised me was a three-bedroom in an in-law apartment. That's a small house. And I, it just surprised me. Just my comment.
Well, it surprised me that, um, an in-law apartment is supposed to have its own entrance, but it's not, it's supposed to be look like a single-family house. Well, that house pretty much looks like two houses.
Unfortunately, we can't erase the past of what was built, you know, so. I, you know, but, but what, what we all look at by today's standard is not what, what he has, but, you know, again, he didn't build it. He didn't have it built. He bought what, what was there, and he's just trying to utilize it by, for what was there.
Mm-hmm.
You know, yeah, you're right. You pull in there, and it's like, well, that, you know, that is a bigger, bigger in-law apartment, but I, I guess when you go by that thirty-five percentile, you know, if someone needs more space, and, and I guess in his case, he's, what do we say is, uh, I didn't catch the whole thing, but it's going to be sister-in-law and two children living there, I think. Is that what he said?
Yes.
Something to that effect, so.
Well, Richard, um, how many square feet are the final tally of the in-law apartment?
Uh, I don't have that. I don't have that with me, but I think it was, um, I'm thinking the house was.
The house was forty-two, fifty, and the apartment is twelve, thirty-five.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
And that's after, and that's including the two-twenty-five, right?
No, the, the, the two-twenty-five would get added into that later. Um, it, it, it does look a lot bigger, because when you approach it, it's got that two-bay garage underneath that you drive into, so that just gives it a more of a feel of grandeur when you pull up to it. It just looks bigger. But when you get into the unit itself, it, it's, it's not as big as it looks from the outside. And it's, you know, it's spread over two floors, because he's got, um, there's a bedroom on the second floor and a, and a full bath on the second floor.
So that the way you compute the thirty-five percent, if you add the two-twenty-five to the twelve, thirty-five,
Yeah.
and then add that to the four, two, five, zero, the total area of the house is fifty-seven, ten, or will be, right?
I'd have to agree with you. I don't have the numbers in front of me. I'm sure, I'm sure you're accurate.
So I'm just saying it'd be thirty percent to make, well, it would be three point, what, three, three?
All right. Are you using your abacus?
No, do you have? I'm just saying that it would, we could of that fifty-seven percent, what is thirty-five percent of fifty-seven, ten? Who's going to calculate it handy?
Hang on.
I'm just going through the exercise so we know how the calculation is made.
Thirty-five percent of fifty-seven hundred is one thousand nine hundred ninety-five.
I get one thousand nine ninety-eight.
Well, I round, I rounded off. I did fifty-seven hundred, because I didn't hear the whole number.
Oh, okay. I had fifty-seven, ten.
Two fifty-seven, ten, because it would make a difference.
Nineteen ninety-eight.
Oops.
You see the issue? Um, we're going to have ten, one, six, four, oh, one. So he's really pretty well under that. That's what I was wondering is how you compute. The way I read the bylaw, you take the total square footage or square floor area or whatever of the entire house, including the in-law apartment. And then you take thirty-five percent of that, and the in-law apartment has to be thirty-five percent. Is that the way you do it, Rich?
I don't think so.
No, that, that's, that's how we did it in Townsend, but I think you guys are just flat thirty-five percent of the house.
Yeah, isn't it thirty-five percent of the main house?
Yeah, it, that's how it should be calculated.
That, well, that's how it's, it is not, it is not of the total air, well, I don't know. What do you call the dwelling? Is the dwelling the in-law plus the house, or is the dwelling just the main residence?
We're looking at five, twelve, aren't we, Susanna?
Yes, we are.
An in-law apartment shall comprise no more than thirty-five percent of the dwelling's total floor area.
And that's the question. By dwelling, do you mean the primary residence, or do you mean?
The entire residence.
The entire.
Wow. Oh, add it together.
This is another question for the planning board, I believe.
But if, if you're just building a house and you want to build an in-law, the in-law isn't already there, so how can you include the square footage of that dwelling if it doesn't exist yet?
As it's on the plan.
So pretend you have a regular three-bedroom house. There's no in-law apartment. And it's four thousand, it's four thousand square foot house, and you're allowed to take thirty-five percent of that and make it into an in-law apartment.
Right.
Does that make more sense?
Well, does that comply with the definition that's on page one oh six?
What's, what's the definition on one oh six?
So the definition is for a dwelling is any building or part thereof used in a whole or in part for continuous or permanent habitation for one or more persons, but not including trailer, mobile homes, overmounted, or commercial accommodation for transient occupancy. Each dwelling to have one or more rooms with cooking, living, sanitary, and sleeping facilities arranged for the continuous or permanent use of one or more individuals living together as a single housekeeping unit as contrasted to a group living together such as a club.
Well, I think we could debate this all night, but I think what we're coming up with, um, Rich, is, um, we need to know, I, I think we don't have a problem with this being under, you know, no matter how it's calculated, because if we're coming up with nineteen ninety-eight or under two thousand for the square footage, no, but you're coming up with fourteen sixty.
Yeah, I, yes, I, I took thirty-five percent of the, of the dwelling unit.
Yeah, I, yes, I, I took thirty-five percent of the, of the dwelling unit, not, not to combine. And again, when, when, when I was in Townsend, it specifically said you took the apartment and the dwelling, you added them together, and took thirty-five percent of that number. You, you, your bylaw doesn't have that language of, specifically have that language, just saying you add them together and then take thirty-five percent.
So you're saying it can only be thirty-five percent of the primary dwelling?
Well, I, I, I think it's, it's what the consensus is going to be, is, is, I could be interpreting incorrectly.
Oh, I don't know what the, well, all I'm trying to figure out is what the interpretation should be. Most of the in-law apartments that we've run into in the past have been in existing homes. Okay? Um, and in an existing home, you would say that it could only take up thirteen, thirty-five percent of the floor area in the home. So I think what we've come up with is two questions for the planning board. What happens if the calculations come up differently, if we use the old method or the new method? Quite frankly, I think we're going to find that the new method um, is probably going to provide a larger in-law than the old method, but only time will tell. And the second question is, when you're doing a house like this, what is meant by the bylaw? Does it need defining, is the planning board intent to be thirty-five percent of the total floor area of both units? Or thirty-five percent of the primary unit? Because it comes out different.
Drastically different.
Yes. Okay, I don't think we're going to resolve that. I think I'll entertain a motion unless someone else has something. Uh, if we have some things, um, to talk about the fair, um, or whatever, um, we can do it after, but, uh, are we, um, anyone wanting to make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Second.
Um, okay, I'll go around with roll call. Jim?
Hi.
Jenny?
Hi.
Pat? Is away from her machine. Jenny?
Hi.
Susanna?
Hi.
And I'm an I.